Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the closed session of the Hermosa Beach City School District School Board for August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Calling to order the closed session for the evening. Michelle, will you please take the roll?
Jen Cole?
Present.
Jen Cole, sorry.
Present.
Doug Gardner?
Here.
Stephen McCall?
Present.
Barbara Zanderos?
Here.
And Maggie Bovella-Monica is absent tonight.
All right.
We have the form.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, we will move on to oral communications from the audience to the board. I am seeing nobody in the room, so we will close oral communications. And we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. All right. Now I lost my place. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Hermosa Beach School Board for August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. There are two items to report out of closed session. The first one is by a vote of four to zero, with a Maggie Bovella-Monica abstaining, the board took action to accept an action, and the particular shall, once formally commenced, be disclosed to any person upon inquiry unless to do so would jeopardize the district's ability to conclude existing settlement negotiations to its advantage. The roll call vote was four ayes, zero nays, and one abstention, the motion by Jen Cole and the second by Stephen McCall. Secondly, the board conducted the superintendent evaluation for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. The board used a new tool this year that it spent a few months working to craft and formulate that looked at the superintendent's performance in four key domains of the school district, which were leadership, education, management, and finance. Within those four domains, there were between one and three standards that were each rated on a zero-to-four scale for performance by the superintendent. We also assessed the achievement, or lack thereof, of the goals that were set out by the board last year on the same zero-to-four scale. And the board gave a overall semantic evaluation performance, and that performance was rated "performance distinguished" for the excellent job that the superintendent did over this past year, that the board was very, very happy with. As we look forward to the year just started, the nineteen-twenty school year, the board did craft four goals for the superintendent for this upcoming year, one goal under each of those four domains. The board and the superintendent have agreed on those four goals, and we look forward to working together to achieve them in the upcoming year. So, we are very happy with the job that the superintendent, Escalante, did. She is the Superintendent of the Year. To remind everyone, it was a job very, very well done, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'm going to need to call to order the open session for the evening. And, Michelle, will you please take the roll?
Jen Cole?
Present.
Doug Gardner?
Present.
Stephen McCall?
Present.
Barbara Zanderos?
Present.
Maggie Bovella-Monica is absent tonight. We have the form.
Excellent. Thank you. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The agenda is approved. We will now move on to announcements. Superintendent Escalante?
Thanks. Thank you very much. Well, we're very excited because we're just a couple of weeks away from starting of school, and it's an exciting time. I've seen the kids out riding their bikes up and down the Pier Avenue, still trying to get their last trips into the beach before school starts, and it's fun to watch the kids in our community have that kind of flexibility and mobility around town. I would like to really encourage parents, if you have not registered your child for school and you live in Hermosa Beach, please do so. Now is the time. And likewise, if you have made plans over the summer that have changed your decision to enroll, have your children attend Hermosa School District, please let us know that as well. So, we're trying to firm up our numbers and make sure that we're ready to go when the doors open. We have had a spike in enrollment. Now, the numbers are soft. There's always this dance at the beginning of the year, but we are up about five percent, which we have been running at least a one class short, a kindergarten class, between fifteen to twenty kids each year, because we have always felt it's a result of our half-day kindergarten program. But this year, we are five percent up, and it is across the board. This is not just kindergartners coming in. So, we're super, super excited to have everyone here. If we know nothing, we know how to flex, and so we can figure it out. We've got people, as they say, on the bench, and we're ready to roll. So, you can help us, help you, if you let us know if you're coming and if you've decided to go somewhere else. Jen Cole sent me a screenshot the other day of her son who goes to Redondo, I hope you don't mind my saying so, on the back of his student ID card, it has the National Suicide Hotline on there. What I wasn't aware of, but my team knew, was that it's now a law that seventh through twelfth graders on any kind of school ID have to have the national one-eight-hundred number for the suicide hotline. So, different districts are deciding how they're going to push that out. Some are just leaving it alone and then checking in after a couple of weeks after school starts. Some are pushing information out in their welcome letter. We've had a conversation about that, and we're going to circle back around next week and come up with some recommendations. But, thank you for bringing that to my attention, and it will be on all of our seventh through eighth grade ID cards, student ID cards. We will be continuing this year also with the Sandy Hook Promise, and as you remember, that program focuses on social isolation, and it also focuses on suicide prevention. So, I think we have a great platform to work off of. We did very, very well with that last year, and people are excited to kick off the year with "start with hello." Our welcome-back letters are crafted and drafted and ready to roll. We'll be pushing those out to our various interest groups, you know, towards the end of this week. Jonathan's been pushing mine out via social media. It's on the website, and we have ourself sequenced so that we don't get email fatigue from welcome-back letters. Those will all go out before the end of this week. Stephen had asked me to do an analysis, once the numbers came in in the summertime from the state, about the P-two, which is the second attendance period, that the state uses to calculate that number of children who are unduplicated. Unduplicated children are foster youth, free and reduced lunch, and children who don't speak English. And so, we have been third lowest funded in the state. We are now the fifth lowest funded in the state. I'm not sure that there's a big difference there. It's a big state, so we are still, we are living off of our base grant and HBEF. I think those are the two critical sources of revenue that we have, and I just hope everybody will continue to do the unbelievable work in our community to support that funding that we do not get from the state because of the state funding formula. I also wanted to bring you up to date about our tech summer extravaganza. I think that's the only way you can explain it. At one point, they put like little twinkle lights around the server or something. I mean, they were getting a little nuts. But Simon and Amit have been working non-stop to live up to their promises to the board this summer. They've completely redone the servers. They've got all of the laptops, everything's formatted, mirrored? Yeah, okay. And they've worked with Spectrum to redo the cables. I mean, they've really, really done a good job. They hit a snag. It was a growth opportunity for them. I have gray hair because of it. But everyone pulled themselves together, came up with a plan, and we made it work. So, they're super excited. They've also been documenting the process, so they'll be coming back in September. They're very anxious to show you what they've done and how they've done it. They take a great deal of pride in knowing that you had confidence in them and what you invested, and so, they're super, super excited. And I think that's it for me right now.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions or comments for the superintendent? Stephen?
I was just going to say, I think that, just on that last point with IT, I think it is always useful to do the, just the analysis afterwards of what went wrong. How can we improve process for future? That's great to hear. That's already a motion. Not to want to be last, but I gather you mentioned fifth lowest, but in LA County, we are absolute.
Yes. We are the lowest. And Manhattan Beach is right behind us. We are the two lowest districts in the county. There is one district in the county that is basic aid, that's Beverly Hills. The four other districts that are below us in funding are all from Northern California. So, there were two districts in addition to those five that were basic aid districts, and I took them out just because they're funded differently. So, yes, it's all Northern California, and there are, let's see, we're fifth. So, there are three elementary districts and one unified district that make up that total.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good? Good? All right. Next, we will have oral communications from the audience to the board. Members of the audience may address the board on any topic regardless of whether it is listed on the agenda. However, the board may not discuss issues raised that are not listed on the agenda. Topics not on the agenda that are brought to the board's attention may be investigated by the administration and are reported to the board either publicly or privately at a future meeting. Complaints regarding district employees must be dealt with in closed session, not in public. Comments from visitors shall not exceed three minutes unless weighed by a majority of all members of the board. Is there any public comment? All right. Seeing none, we will close. Public comment? Thank you. Moving on to written communications. Do we have any written communications? Jen?
Just had three. Just one person contacted me about field availability at Valley, and I told them to talk to other people. One contacted me about some of the parking, things we've been talking about at North School, and another one contacted me about, I'm forgetting right this second. Wasn't urgent. Sorry, I wrote it down, but I forgot. Yeah, no.
That's okay.
Yeah, enrollment. Sorry, that was the other one.
Thank you. Stephen?
I may have been contacted similar by a community member about parking at North School.
Barb?
I have nothing.
All right. Thank you. I don't have anything either. So, now we will move on to superintendent update. Superintendent Escalante?
Thank you very much. Well, we have two tracks that we're moving on tonight. One is looking at the Measure S North Guaranteed Maximum Price. That's going to come in a little while, but first, we're going to start with Lawrence, who's going to be here from Stradling Yocas, Carlson, and Roth?
Ralph.
Roth, who is our bond counsel. Lawrence has been here before you in the past, and so, what he is doing is he is the disclosure police tonight. He's going to make sure.
Not the police.
He's going to make sure that you have been educated, and if you have any questions regarding disclosures, disclosure responsibilities under the security laws for general obligation bonds. It is SB, I'm not sure.
Ten-twenty-nine for the debt management.
Okay. There you go. Welcome, Lawrence.
Yeah, welcome. Welcome, Lawrence. Before you begin, I just wanted to point out that in the agenda, I think we might have skipped one piece. That's okay. We can go back. Lawrence is for the superintendent report and board discussion, which is R-oh-three-nineteen-twenty on the presentation on the disclosure responsibilities under federal securities laws for Measure S general obligation bonds.
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. Welcome, Lawrence. Thank you. Sorry I had to get the...
I'm not the right person.
Yeah, the right person. We're all good. We're all good. Just, I don't know if I had to point out what the number is, but I wanted to make sure it was covered, so, thank you.
Sure. Good evening. Lawrence from Stradling Yocas, Carlson, and Ralph, who are bond counsel of the district. And I'm here to give a sort of a short presentation on general responsibilities of the board and district staff under federal securities laws. And that's because from time to time, as you know, the district does issue municipal bonds such as GO bonds to the capital markets, and the SEC, as a regulator, one of the first things they ask when they show up on the scene and something goes wrong is, have you had training? Has staff had training? Has the board had training? So, we do this for any client who's willing to indulge us. When there's staff turnover or board turnover, we do it. We were here a couple of years ago to do this, and for frequent issuers, we do it almost on a yearly basis. So, with that, and feel free to stop me with questions at any time. So, why is disclosure necessary? As I said, Hermosa Beach City School District issues securities, GO bonds, sometimes certificates of participation to Wall Street, and investors in those bonds have rights under federal securities laws to all material information regarding the district. And we'll talk about, a little bit about what is material in just a little bit. So, there are two main bodies of law that govern municipal securities, like those issued by the district. The first is the Securities Act of nineteen ninety-three. There are two big substantive rules. One is a registration requirement from which municipal issuers such as the district is exempt, and the other is an anti-fraud rule, which it does apply to the district. And that prohibits any person from directly and indirectly obtaining money essentially by fraudulent means. The other is the Securities Exchange Act of nineteen thirty-four, and that also contains anti-fraud provisions, and a nineteen seventy-five amendment made it very clear that government issuers such as the district, this applies to the district. And that rule is Rule ten-B five, and it says that it's unlawful for any person through any device or scheme such as an offering document to make any untrue statement of a material fact or to omit a material fact to make the statements that you do make not misleading. So, as an example, what is material, what is untrue statement of a material fact? Extreme examples, if we say in your offering document, Superintendent Escalante has forty years of experience, but she really has thirty-nine, not going to jail for that. You know, you'll be hurt. Extreme example, on the other way of admission, say there were fifteen charter schools going to open in your district, didn't say anything about it, probably not okay. So, extreme examples, but sort of paints a picture. So, a materiality standard, as I mentioned, the standard that's been set by the Supreme Court is whether or not a reasonable investor will consider the information important when they go to look at your bonds. So, say someone wants to buy five, ten thousand dollars' worth of your Measure S GO bonds. What would they care about? And the SEC has provided very little actual guidance on this standard, so it's really, a lot of it comes down to almost a common sense analysis. You know, given that, we view that over-disclose is better than undisclosed. If it's a question, put it out there, let the market react to it, and let them decide. So, under these two bodies of law, there are three levels of culpability. One is negligence. The district failed to meet what a reasonable person in the circumstances would have done. There's recklessness. You ignored some real big red flags. You really should have known about this and said something, but you did not. And then the rarest is scienter. You lied purposefully. Doesn't happen very often. So, when do these rules apply? They apply for new offerings, such as when you go out to issue your GO bonds, later, you issued the first series a couple of years ago, and when you go issue this next series in a couple of months. And it also applies when you file annual reports under Rule fifteen-C two-twelve, which is, every time you go issue a GO bond, the underwriter of your bonds, the investment bank, needs to be assured that you will provide annual reporting to the public markets. So, when you do those annual reporting, that these same rules apply. You cannot go out there and say something in your annual reports that's false, or you cannot omit something that would make what you say misleading. And it also applies to when officials, district officials, go out, you know, make speeches and says things in public that are, the market may pick up on and react. So, say, board president, you want to go out and make a speech, we're going to increase ADA by a lot. You know, and it turns out, well, what was that based on? Turns out not to be true. There's a liability there. So, the first category is primary offerings. It's a sale of bonds to the public by means of what in the municipal world is called an official statement. In the private sector, a prospectus. When you go buy stocks, you get a prospectus. And that official statement has to contain all the, what is material information relating to the district. And the SEC has made very clear that that official statement is the district's document. It's not the investment bank's document, it's not the lawyer's document, it's not any of your consultant's document. It is the district's document. So, while we as disclosure counsel, if you have an underwriter on board, they will help you piece together, we will help you piece together that document. Ultimately, the district is responsible for it. And the other category of when, as we talked about, when these rules apply is annual reports. And annual reports are required so long as that particular bond issuance remains outstanding and hasn't been paid off. So, generally, you will include in those annual reports your CAFR, and then information that you identified in your agreement to provide those annual reports, which is generally big-picture items, your ADA, your enrollment, your statement of revenues, expenses, your balance sheet, that kind of thing. A lot of stuff is already included in your CAFR, but those are general big pieces of information that are generally included for school districts. And then while you do those annual reports, you should also consider, are there things going on that you should consider including in that year in particular because it's going on, but in future years, you know, if it's not applicable, no longer need a report. So, if there's a massive lawsuit relating to something in that year, investors should ought to know about it. So, in that year, you would add that to your annual report. So, what should be disclosed in your official statements when you go out for new offering? Unlike the private sector, again, there are no line item set of rules by the SEC of what should go in and what should not go in, and that may be a result of the fact that, you know, in the municipal world, you have cities, school districts, water districts, counties. Everybody operates fairly differently in their realms. So, there is no sort of one-size-fits-all for municipal disclosure. So, it's really general guidelines that leaders in the municipal market have developed over the years. Industry groups get together to talk about what they, you know, come together and discuss what they think is, should go into a school district's offering document. And we look at, as lawyers, what has the SEC focused on in recent years in their enforcement actions to inform us to help our clients make sure they don't, you know, make those same mistakes? In the end, the board and staff is in the best position to know what is going on in the district, so your judgment is obviously very valuable in helping us to craft disclosure. So, there is a disclosure process generally begins with, we want to go out for a bond. We seek input from district staff. We gather the information. We put together the official statement. We go back a few rounds with Pat and Paula, making sure we think we've captured everything that needs to go into that document, and then it gets presented to you at a board meeting. And you have an opportunity to review it, let us know if there's anything missing. A lot of times, you guys are in a position that we're not in to know what's going on in the community and individual schools and whatnot, so you get a chance to review and provide us with your input, and we will incorporate that into the official statement. Let's dump the head there. But after your approval and before the offering document actually goes out to the market to sell the bonds, we'll have what's called a due diligence session. If there's no investment bank already on board, so we're selling this competitively in the market, then it will be just amongst the staff, your district council, and us, just to, one more sort of final read-through to make sure we haven't missed anything. If there is an underwriter, the underwriter and their lawyer will have a chance to ask questions in that session as well. And then when the preliminary official statement is completely done, we will, Pat will sign a certificate saying this is final. It will be released to the market, and that will be, then the bonds will be sold roughly a week later. So, with that process, and given what needs to go into the official statement, we want to be mindful of sort of the timing of certain major reports and major events that occur during the fiscal year for the school district. So, for example, we don't want to put out an official statement to go sell bonds when a week later, your audit's going to be done, because your audit may or may not say something that's different from what we just put out there. So, and another example, we don't want to put something out there when new assessed values are coming out for the next year. We want to include that information because it's, in case there's a change, usually it's not very drastic, but, you know, you never know. Or if there is pending litigation and we don't, there's a hearing in a week after we put this book out on the market, we don't want to do that. We don't know what that hearing is going to result in. So, those are sort of the timing considerations to be mindful of as we go out to market with a disclosure document. And this, next slide's a sort of a list of general topics that are relevant for general obligation bonds of school districts in particular. And you'll see in the preliminary official statement from your prior offerings and in the next one to come up, we sort of go through these items. What is your tax base? How is your assessed value? Who are the top taxpayers? Your pension plans and your post-employment plans? How have the new accounting rules affected what those numbers look like? Enrollment trends? How do your projections look? What is your capital improvement plan? How much are you looking to spend in the next, you know, three to five years? And whether or not there's any litigation or investigations against the district in general or in any particular, you know, personnel? So, those are the sort of the things that would definitely go into a offering document for a school district. And outside of school districts in general, there's sort of different areas of emphasis, and this sort of changes, sort of the hot topics of the day. You know, what is discussed a lot now is maybe what's going to be the impact of the next recession? When is that going to happen? What might that look like? How is the district's fund balances and reserves looking like? And continuing disclosure compliance, this has been a big one for the SEC in the last few years. That promise you make to make annual reports every year, a lot of issuers have not kept that promise very well. So, the SEC has had a whole program a couple of years ago to sort of turn yourself in, and if you don't, we'll come after your kind of program. So, it's been a big focus of the SEC in recent years. And with the new GASB standards, a lot of extra disclosure about what that does to your bottom line as far as your OPEB and pension liabilities go. And then you may have heard that there's a ballot proposition on the next November twenty election for a split role, having to do with moving the assessed value of commercial properties up to market value. So, not really all that relevant, honestly, for school district GO bonds, since your GO bond tax is separate from AV. But these are sort of the topics that, you know, are being talked a lot about now, generally in municipal bond market, and that changes from time to time. So, just general considerations as we put together an offering document, you know, your disclosure changes, like I said, depending on what's going on at the time. You always read an OS, just because you prepared one a year ago doesn't mean it's just updating numbers because it was just a year ago. I mean, things change. Always look at it with a fresh set of eyes. If you think something is of concern, bring it up. It's always better to bring it up and just wash it or say, oh, yes, maybe we should put that in there, just to be safe, rather than later, you know, looking back, I really should have done that, you know? And political sensitivity and confidentiality are not... And political sensitivity and confidentiality are not exceptions to disclosure. If a topic is politically sensitive, or if maybe there's litigation going on and it's confidential, the choices are to wait and not do the deal till later, or disclose it. So the, the SEC has made it very clear, those are not, they don't care. So. And when things go bad, I mean, the SEC's primary vehicle to, when they come down on issuers for, for poor disclosure are enforcement actions. And the SEC has, has the ability to bring civil actions, they could refer actions to the DOJ for criminal, for criminal actions. And the SEC has brought actions against municipal issuers, as well as lawyers who may have done a bad job, underwriting banks who may have done a bad job. So there are consequences to bad disclosure. And some of those consequences are, in an investigation of the district, you're going to have to pay lawyers to deal with that. And, you know, that, that's an extra cost and consultants to deal with that. There's adverse publicity. When, if this gets out into the news, it's probably harder to go back out into the market very soon again if, should you need extra capital. And if they were in a settlement with the SEC, the district may have to undertake new procedures or new oversight. It's, it's more cumbersome process later on if, if something were to go wrong. And just by way of a couple of examples of when things have gone wrong. In Orange County, this was a number of years ago where it, it became very clear, and this sort of came out within the bankruptcy, that the, the county officials, the board, had not take, had not really reviewed the official statement at all. I mean, it became very apparent to the SEC, and certain times, those items were on consent. So it's added to more, adds to the, the image that, you know, you did not actually, you know, review it at all. Same thing, similar situation in San, City of San Diego. The, one of their offering documents just completely misstated their pension and retired healthcare liability. And the emphasis, the city conducted a, a commission study, and it was, they found, again, excessive reliance on the lawyers, the staff and the, the council not actually doing their own work to make sure that the document was correct. Complete lack of procedures, and the good thing is, your district had, adopted procedures a number of years, years ago. So if the, again, if the SEC were to show up and say, do you have procedures for when you put together these disclosure documents? We could say, yes, you know, here they are, here's what we do every time, we do, just wing it when we put together these documents. State of New Jersey's similar, failed to disclose material information regarding two pension plans. The state treasurer did not read the OS, there was no written policies or procedures, no training to staff, again, you've checked that box tonight. And this was in West Clark Community School District, so going back to the continued disclosure annual reporting. SEC regulations say that you have to state in your offering document whether or not you've complied with those annual reportings in the last five years. West Clark said, absolutely, 100% we have. In fact, they had not at all, like it wasn't even close. So they got in trouble for that one. State of Illinois, same thing, unfunded, misstatement of unfunded liabilities. Similar with Miami, just misstatements relating to tax compliance. Allen Park, again, no written policies or procedures. And they entered into a settlement where they agreed to undertake disclosure training, the staff and the, and the council had to. And, and an added punishment for this one was the mayor had to enter into a settle agreement, settlement agreement and pay a $10,000 fine. And Westlands, there was a, the SEC alleges misstatement of debt service coverage in one of their documents. And more specifically, there were prior period adjustments in their financial statements and, and restatements that were in the CAFR attached to the official statement. And in the SEC's mind, that wasn't enough, you need to bring that forward into the, in the front part. And you'll, you'll see the structure of it, but you need to really highlight that in the front. And they entered into a settlement, the, the sort of novel punishment for this one was the district itself was ordered to pay $125,000 in fines. The general manager was ordered to pay $50,000 in his own personal funds, insurance was not allowed to cover it. So he had to pony up that out of his own money. Same with the assistant general manager for $20,000. So in summary, just recommend actions and periodic training such as tonight, you know, every couple of years when the staff turnover, look at your disclosure policies from time to time. We're going, in the next, probably, not, maybe not the next meeting, but the meeting after, we're going to have, bring amended disclosure policies to you to, to adopt that account for new requirements under SEC regulations that came into effect this year. So just keeping that up to date. And when you go put together an OS, review the entire thing. Just because, like I said, just because we did one recently doesn't mean things couldn't have changed. Feel free to ask us questions, ask any of your consultant questions, ask your accountant, accountant questions. You know, anybody who puts information into that document, ask them where did it come from? And then any other questions relating to POS itself, again, it's no, there's no silly questions. Always better to vet it before the fact than to regret it, you know, after it already has gone out. So happy to take any questions or?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Jen?
First of all, thank you. That was like a really good schooling, and I'm very more, you did a good job, really good job. It was very clear. And then I just wanted to know, I just had read in the newspaper about bonds being a better thing to invest in right now for people. Is this like going to be in our favor, or is that a way to like, is it just a set price and it's a set price?
No, no, I mean, I'm not the numbers guy, but, but in general, I mean, interest rates have been very low. I mean, it is a good environment for bonds. People have tended to flock to safety when there's volatility in the market, given what's going on in the world and, and politics and whatnot. So interest rates are very low, so. I would defer to the finance people for that, but yeah, just as a casual observer, yes.
Good. Steven?
No questions.
Barb?
Um, no, no, well, you know, I, something about the litigation part disclosing still bothers me. What, have you seen an issue like that in any other district? Not that, you know, we have any litigation coming up, but where, it's time, they have to sell the bond, but they, you know, there's something big coming out, like your hands are tied then, what do you do?
Really, either you disclose it, or you just have to wait. I mean, that's really, I mean?
But disclosing it's illegal, correct?
Correct.
A lot of time, right?
If it's?
If it's something with personnel or something with the, you know, family, student, something?
If it's a personnel matter or a student educational matter, we can say generally, there are these, there is this litigation going on. But we do not expect that kind of litigation to have an impact on your ability to repay these general obligation bonds which are repaid from property taxes. So that would be, you know, always sufficient to let the market know, hey, there is stuff going on, but it doesn't relate to where you're getting paid back from. So, I mean, that's, we, we don't have to tell the whole story of, of what is going on with that litigation, but if it's material to your financial condition, it does need to be disclosed in some form.
Thank you.
All right. I'm good. Thank you.
I, I did receive, just before we got here today, a new financing schedule for the sale of the bonds. So I will pass these out to you, and we'll post this on the website tomorrow morning. Oops, Paula needs one. Hot off the press.
All right. And with that, we will move on to the next superintendent report and board discussion, R-04-1920 on the Measure S Facilities Program update.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We've been very, very busy since the last meeting. The summer lighting project at View and Valley are now complete. This was paid for by Prop 39 retrofit funding. That, the change has been absolutely fantastic and noticeable. People are very excited that the school no longer looks like it's at half function in terms of the ability to see what's going on. The multipurpose room looks like a whole, a whole new environment. And Jen Cole cannot stop gushing about the gym. So, I, I mean, everyone talks, is talking about how terrific it was. And a lot of credit goes to Nancy, who has served as our project manager. This is her third year serving as a project manager in the summertime in addition to her other duties. And her oversight saves the district from not having to hire a project manager through whatever company has awarded the bid at a higher cost. And so, and she makes sure that the job is done and done well, and she leaves no item unaddressed. And they respect her, and they, they work really well for her. So Nancy, really, really appreciate your work on all of the summer projects, but now we can see what you've done in the past. So that's, that's a good start. We've also received, noted, the district received a notice from the Coastal Commission of intent to issue a permit at North. As you know, we, I missed the last board meeting because we were up there at the coastal. So they've actually sent the notice to the district, and we are in the process of pulling together the documents that they're asking for. Prior to the issuance of the permit, we need to submit a final copy of the DSA plans, which we have already done. The landscape plans, and we have worked with the city to, they have a tree list, I did not know that. But the plants, the landscaping is all indigenous and drought resistant and so on, and it aligns with the trees that the city has approved. And also a parking management plan and park, parking signage plan on site, which is talking about now that the 41 spaces that are reserved during the school day for school staff and school use will be open at night and on the weekends and during vacations. We need to put together a signage plan for that, and we've already talked with the Coastal Commission, so I think it's generally already been outlined. Prior to construction, we need to submit a construction and pollution prevention plan, a post-development runoff plan, as in water runoff, and a sensitive species survey that has to be conducted 72 hours prior to construction to monitor active birds by a biologist. And then the final item is prior to occupancy, having the off-site parking signage plan, which is the MOU that we've been working on with the city so that we can establish how, what the safer routes to school are, what some of the traffic calming suggestions are. And so we will have that, and what the neighborhood restrictions will be. Another thank you to Nancy, Redondo used our site for many, many years as the mommy and me facility, Adult Ed, and they had containers storing all of their stuff. And those things are not easy to, to move, and they left them for us. And so Nancy contacted Redondo and asked them to please come get them, and they did. And so thanks to Stephen Keller over in Redondo Beach, the superintendent there, and his team for not only removing them at, at free of charge. So really love having such a great relationship with our neighbors. We have removed some identified items off the property for safekeeping. People may realize that the letters are off of the school, and we've put them away. One of the big challenges, we went through the school, oh my gosh, many, many, many months ago to start an itemization list, we shared it with the board way back when. Lead-in asbestos, our big concern about what are the items that we can, you know, that we want to keep and, and keep safe. There is a caterpillar place structure out in the back that I personally wish I could put in my yard. There's something about it that I love. There's two of them at Valley Park. So I, we contacted the historical society in the city, and they're, they're good with what they've got. So those are going to be moving on. A lot of, I think that it's important for the community to understand that in terms of salvaging, there are a lot of issues with kind of a chain of, not command, but a chain of possession of items because there's, there's always liability attached to nearly everything that we move along. And so we, we've had situations where we wanted to donate items to a group, or some people wanted to donate services to us, but if something happens as a result of that donation, where is that liability? And nowadays, we have to be super, super careful about that. So we're, we're very mindful about making sure that we're not offering things or allowing items to be, you know, given away because we do not want that chain of liability to extend to somebody else's usage and come back to, to the district. We had a kickoff meeting with about 20 people a week ago, and it was terrific. It was very exciting. We had the architect, we had, oh, the district team, we had the construction company. Erickson Hall was there with their team, we had the inspectors of record, testers, insurance people, and I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody. But it was a chance for all of us to be in the room to review some of the expectations, some of the, the guidelines from the state that are, the requirements that need to be followed. It's very involved, very highly regulated, all of these different processes. But one of the things that really impressed me was the collegiality amongst the members of the group. I felt as if there was a great deal of respect from either working with one another in other jobs or just by reputation. I feel like different companies that we have hired, they're sending out their best people, and I, I know that. And so that means a lot to us. They, everyone kind of, I, I think, really felt like we were on the same page and a part of something really special. And if you don't have that, then you're going to get off to a really rough start. So I want the board to know that I was really, really pleased with the meeting. We've also done some work for the MOU committee. We conducted a survey with district families to learn about how they travel to school. It was the same survey that was given in 2016. And so the consultant wants to compare apples to apples and see what the changes are in the data. We doubled, did double the response. So thanks to you parents who were maybe at the beach and took the survey and sent it in, that was fantastic. We turned that around really fast. We're also finalizing, Leann and I today, finalizing the creation of an application to serve as a member of a stake, of the stakeholder group, which is a part of the MOU. So that application is being reviewed by the consultant and will be posted on the district and city websites very shortly, and also pushed out through social media. We are within our timeframe that we had established, so working, working on that. With regards to communication, the Measure S website landing page has been updated. I met with Jonathan, and we spent a few hours working on specifically Measure S and trying to make sure that we know the traffic to that, that particular landing page is going to increase dramatically once we get started here. And so it will serve as a main distribution source of information regarding North School and, and the other Measure S projects. Information such as schedules or timelines, construction updates, just with regards to board action and things happening. In terms of construction will be posted, neighborhood updates. And I, I really want to thank Erickson Hall Anthony, who I see hiding in the back. Anthony has created not only a 15-month schedule, but has also created a, what they call a three-week look-ahead schedule. I have both of those, I've given those copies to the board. All of this will be posted tomorrow morning on the website. And so we have our community bulletin board that is going to be sunk in cement over there, and information will be posted there. And then I've been reaching out to the liaison in the North neighborhood in particular, and they've been distributing information out to their friends and neighbors and, and email us. We do have a designated email address, which is measure.sconstruction@hpcsd.org. We will check that daily. If you have a comment, concern, idea, whatever, you can send it there. We will respond to you, but we're not going to be sitting on it. So once a day, we'll take it, we'll take a look, and we'll get back to you right away, or direct you to somebody who may have a particular answer. And I know that, one of the things I learned about Erickson Hall is that they're super efficient about schedules, scheduling. And I feel really confident that they're going to be doing everything they can to keep to their schedules. However, I really want to kick this off by making sure that people know that although they have a, a reputation for precision, which we really, really appreciate, and they're sensitive to working in such, you know, in a neighborhood, especially one that's really close by, that there will be close by, that there will be times when there are construction vehicles or just construction stuff that doesn't belong to the district. There are a lot of home projects that are going on, so, and a lot of things are going on in the city. I mean, my, I myself got trapped in my garage the other day because the sewer people were coming through and cleaning out. I, I don't feel the, the city has to notify me of that. And, and so we want to communicate to the public, but we don't want to over-communicate and set an expectation that we're going to know what every truck is doing in those areas. And so what they did tell me is that they do plan to work, obviously within the city frameworks of their, the time, allow by timelines. No work will be conducted on Sundays and with very few exceptions, they do not plan to conduct work on Saturdays. So they're going to get in and work hard and try to, you know, give the neighborhood a little bit of, a break on the weekends. And all of this is subject to change. I mean, as much as we want to communicate, you know, this is a fluid process and I, my new analogy for this school year is lava lamp. Everything's going, you know, in different directions. It's in the, in the container, but the boundary, the edges are a little floaty. So, you know, please, please be patient. If there's anything aside from the email address, you can always email me, call the district office. And of course, if there's anything that is a safety concern to you or anyone else, call 911. The last thing I just wanted to talk about was we also this week received our bond rating from Standards and Poor. We received a double A rating, which we have ha, always had in the past and we're thrilled that we've been able to maintain that. That is going to create a very competitive market for our bonds when we go to sell them next month. And John Isom, who is our financial advisor, is very, very excited about that. And I pass to you the timelines. It looks on your timeline as if the bond pricing will be on October 9th and the closeout will be October 23rd. That is the timeline as of this afternoon. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Are there any questions? Barb, start this in.
I do, I have a couple. Who, who is it that inspects, what, what entity inspects the project as it goes along? North School?
We hire-
Not the city, correct?
No.
Oh, sorry.
It's not the city. It's a, Nancy, do you want to come up and talk about that?
It's an independent-
Use the mic, please, sorry.
So we put out an RFP to hire an independent inspector of record that represents the district. So they'll be working on behalf of us along with the materials testing company in Erickson Hall.
Oh, so we hire, so it's not like the state sends an inspector or the county or anybody?
No. So they work on behalf of the district.
Okay. Thank you. And then just one other thing-
Wait, stay there in case you-
I'm sorry. So it's 15 months will be the entire plan of building North School and starting from the day abatement starts or after demolition is done or when, when's that date?
So I'm gonna-
Or not date, but when does it officially start, the 15-month count?
We're going to do a little deeper dive on this and later on under action items. So if you'll just put that in a parking lot for now and ask Erickson Hall, they're going to be doing a presentation and they can maybe talk with you. I don't want to give you that information. But one of the things about the lease leaseback method is that they're incentivized to have as few days as possible because the price is guaranteed. So we'll, they'll circle back around and talk about that when we get down to action.
Good.
Any other?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen?
Good.
Jen?
Good.
All right. I'm good too. Thank you for such a thorough update.
Yeah, that's great.
All right. I'm going to circle back to, I don't know if there are any board reports, but board reports, if there are any. Barb?
I have none.
Stephen?
None.
Jen?
No.
All right. Me either. It's nice and quiet in the summer. It's terrific. All right. We will then move on to consent. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
What is it? Right. I just had one question I forgot to ask before the meeting.
I don't know if your mic is on.
Sorry.
One question, it's a Paula question. And then I just, can you talk to me about, or talk to us about frontline education and what they provide for annual membership for absent management? Absence management?
Frontline is our subfinder system, so all our substitutes go in there.
Okay, got it. Just know what it's called.
Teacher absence.
Great. And then science, I see we're getting a lot of curriculum, teacher guides and kits. Do we get, do we get PD included in that?
Yes.
Great. Yes.
Are there, is there a motion to approve consent?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barb. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Consent calendar is approved. We will next move on to board action, starting with business B-18-1920 on approval of the final guaranteed maximum price for the new construction in North School, project number 007.
Really?
I don't think that was on purpose, but it's pretty cool.
So Barbie, you don't have to wait very long because we got there faster than I thought we would. So tonight, we are bringing to you a recommendation that the Board of Education approve a guaranteed maximum price for the new construction at North School, project 007, to Erickson Hall Construction Company in the amount of $24,470,398. At the January 9 board meeting of this year, the Board of Education approved a request for proposals pursuant to the lease leaseback delivery method in accordance with Education Code 17406 for the Hermosa Beach City School District, District's Measure S Projects North, Project 007, View 008, and Valley 009. After the RFP evaluation, four firms were selected to interview on March 14th. Through a multi-step process, the district selected Erickson Hall as the contractor, providing the best overall value in accordance with Education Code 17406. The Board of Education approved to award the agreement for the District's Measure S Projects to Erickson Hall at the May 8, 2019 board meeting. At the May 8, 2019 board meeting, the Board of Education approved the master contract agreements, which included the master construction services agreement, the master lease, the master site lease, and the master sublease agreement with a general contractor firm to provide facilities, project management services for the Measure S facilities, new construction, modernization projects and facilities improvements using the lease leaseback delivery method, and to name Erickson Hall Construction Company as the general contractor. After numerous negotiations and extensive value engineering, the Board of Education is now being asked to consider for approval the GMP received by Erickson Hall, which includes a 3% construction contingency of $668,82,000 and of various allowances of $485,666 to complete the new construction for the North School Project 007. For the GMP contract amount, the contractor guarantees to complete all work as shown on the contract drawings and included in the technical specifications, barring any unforeseeable conditions or owner requested changes for the GMP contract price. The GMP contract amount for the North School 007 is inclusive of the 3% construction contingency and the allowances. With it, with the inclusion, inclusion of the 3% construction contingency and allowances is $24,470,398, all with costs to be charged to Measure S. Any contingency or allowances, allowance monies remaining will be returned to the Measure S account. The Measure S account currently has a balance of $19,860,909.42. So before we get started, what, so Erickson Hall are here today, Dave Erickson and Mike Hall, and they have a little presentation with regards to the $24.4 million number. But before you come up, what I thought I would do, just to set the stage, is to review kind of the history of how we got to, to where we are today. So Michelle is going to put up a document on the document camera and if you'll allow me to just kind of walk you through, so memory lane. You need some, some off music.
Been a long lane.
Yeah. Thank you, Michelle. So back, way back in the dark ages of 2016, we had, the district had gone through a process to complete a facilities master plan, and that master plan was put before the voters for Measure S. On the master plan, the amount estimated for North School was 28.2 to, 28.2 to $32.4 million cost. That was for the surface parking option. There was another option, which was the underground parking, and that was obviously a much bigger number. The board chose to go with the surface parking. So they assumed, looking at the lowest number, they assumed total project cost is $28,500,000. The, this was based on the schematics that were, not the schematics, but really the rendering that were, the renderings that were drawn by GKK during the time when we were collecting information from the community through our series of meetings. But also they reflect the value engineering and the mitigation variables that we did between Measure Q and Measure S. So when you look at the actual construction costs of that $28 million, it, it is about $22 million. That is a deduction of a 30% soft cost. That is a multiplier that is used. Sometimes the multiplier is higher in more complex projects and a little lower. It depends on what the project is, but going with the higher number, that's minus the 30% soft cost. So in the initial schematic designs, so the schematic designs you may remember were when SVA and Nathan came and he was showing you different design work that was more specific than just those renderings. And Bernards was the construction management company that the district had hired at the time. Bernards looked at this through the lens of a CM multi-prime estimation. That is where the, the, the price can, it, it's not guaranteed. And so you, you would see change orders possibly in a, in a CM multi-prime. The reason why the district went with that at that time was because lease leasebacks were just at the tail end of being legally vetted, going through a legal process, and so the district wasn't confident that it was going to be a viable tool, and that was the tool that was going to make the most sense at that time. So Bernards came in and they did an initial estimate, a schematic estimate, at $22,470,522. From that number, we did a lot of value engineering, and that value engineering was in around the $814,000 range. Some of that was reflected here, is we had a grand hallway in the school where we expected to not only have monitors so that kids could track digital energy usage on a daily basis, teachers could use it as a teaching station. There were some alcoves for small groups and collective reading and, and all of that. So we removed the grand hallway, made it into just a traditional sized hallway, and then removed those alcoves, which allowed us to shrink the east to west size of the building by 20 feet. We also reduced the size of the multipurpose room, and so we reduced the height and compacted it and moved around the seating area, the, the serving area, and we were able to save around 814,000. So Bernards came in and, and based on that adjustment, the, the number moved to $21,655,655. These are big numbers I'm not used to talking about. And so we wanted to, at the time, make sure that we didn't have just one set of eyes on these numbers. And I'll tell you why, was because the estimators from GKK, who gave us the original numbers that went before the voters, also, it was the same people who were giving us the Bernards numbers. They left GKK. It was just a coincidence. So we thought, well, you know, we would really like to make sure that we have another set of eyes. And so Sierra West came in. They are a company that does estimation, school estimators, and this was also in 2017. And they, their number came in higher. There was a differential between Bernards and Sierra West of about $1.4 million. And so that's where we kind of sat, that, that from that time, the plans were now in DSA in 2008 and, and getting approved, the, the design drawings that were in DSA in 2018. What did I say? Oh, sorry, 2018. And then that's when we got a little bit sidetracked and stalled on the EIR and some of the other things that we were trying to sort through. And that brings us to Erickson Hall. And so we, the board made the decision to go put out the RFP and we went through the process, as I just talked about. And Erickson Hall was selected by the board to be the, the new construction company under a lease leaseback agreement. So they came in with their estimators and took a look at these design, the, they're called DD drawings and, which have already been approved by the, by the state. And so those drawings are pretty, you know, firm. And so their initial estimate was $24,604,336. And we are wrestled with them and we, after, we had, I think, three meetings. And so we are bringing forward to you $24,470,398 as a guaranteed maximum price. I will ask them, you know, to come up because they'll talk to you about how they got to that $24 million number. But I also wanted to say that if you were to use the highest multiplier of 30% on your soft costs, that would bring the total of this project approximately to $31,811,517, which still is underneath the initial range that the district put forward in front of the voters back in 2016. So I think they're going to talk to you about some of the ways that we're very proud of this number because of the years of delay and inflation and all of those things. So I'm going to invite you to come up now and share with them how we got to this number. This is Dave Erickson, owner, co-owner of Erickson Hall.
There you go. Thank you.
And mic's in the back.
The members of the board, we're excited about the project. I think we have a PowerPoint here coming up. All my thunder's already been thrown out there. The process.
A little backup never hurts.
You got the pretty picture, though.
It is a great picture. So just some chronology, some of that has already been talked about, is the initial budget start for the schematic. They pointed out to me that that was 22 pages of drawing. And then we ended up with the construction drawings, I think the number, I may be out of, out of sync here, but about 120 pages plus a book about the spec with all the details. You obviously are very well aware of the whole environmental coastal commission issue that comes up and some of that issues that have been added to the project. So as part of our project, once we were selected, we put our team together and they do a constructibility review, which means they sit down and essentially do a quality control review on the drawings and have that discussion with the architect back and forth, and what do you mean by this? And this isn't clear to us as a bidder, and so we're trying to make the, trying to add any input that we can early on so that we clear that up for the bidders, the subcontractors, because the, the more clarity, I don't know if that's right in English, the more clear those drawings are, the better the pricing is, the more consistent, you know, people guessing. So we went out to 1,893 subcontractors, which is a lot, but in this, in this current economy, people are busy, and we ended up with 220 bid responses. That's across about 35 trades, which was an exceptional response. It, it provides a great comparison between bids. You don't just have one bid that you wonder, is that high or low? You don't have two and say, does this person know what they want to do? You have, you have a good number and you can see what's going on there. You have, you have a good number and you can see what's going on there. As, as we talked about, or as the superintendent talked about, we came in and said, okay, here's the number. Here's what we've got, we've compiled it all. They spent time and they reduced that by two hundred thousand dollars. And I think if I'm remembering correctly, a big chunk of that was taking a look at some alternatives to the shade shelter and actually reduce that price, giving you the same or better shade shelter that was there. There we go. So schematic design, twenty-two sheets. We finally ended up with two hundred and sixty-five pages. I will say in the last couple of years, the industry average is of escalation is about ten to fifteen percent. Specific, that's broad brush. And then there's some specific things that have happened with schools we can talk about. The, the earthwork after the Solos investigation, that was a pretty sizable increase from the original schematic budget when they had more detail. There was a stormwater addition that has come in with the new stormwater requirement. So there is going to be essentially a swimming pool under your parking lot to collect the runoff before it goes into the storm drain system, which is significant. And some of the structural elements changed. Guaranteed maximum price, we talked about it really well. It is, there is a contingency here. And we, we have done this a lot. I think there's one case where we were not able to return contingency to the owner. But with that contingency, we think that's sufficient to guarantee that we, there is no reason to go over that and up right and accomplish that budget. As Anna was pointing out, the contingency and allowances, unused amounts, go back to the district for our agreement. And at this point, with the bids that we put out, we have issued letters of intent to all the subcontractors. And essentially they say, we are, we have been awarded the contract, but we haven't been given a notice to proceed. As soon as we get a notice to proceed, you have a contract. And one of the things that does is that allows us to lock in pricing. So some of these tariff issues that are floating back and forth, we're getting notices that metal stud prices are going up or drywall is going up. And, and the subcontractors have been able to lock those numbers in. And with that, I'm open to questions.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just have one other caveat. Correct me, Dave, if I'm wrong. But if you go out to bid and the bid comes in lower than what you expected, then we, Erickson Hall doesn't take that differential and, and put it into their profit margin. We, we share that. And so the district gets seventy-five percent of that differential and Erickson Hall gets twenty-five percent. So allowances and contingencies come back a hundred percent. But if there is a differential in the bid, now if it goes the other way, then Erickson Hall.
Right. Although that, we've already gone to bid, so we've pretty well got those numbers locked.
Right. But if something were to, you know, change, that's the way it is in the agreement. I think it's, it's just important for you to understand where there would, if those situations arose, that, that's how we have, that's our agreement.
All right, are there questions? Barbara?
One thing that I read on one of these pages here, it says that the contract time is three hundred and forty days. Is that our contract with Erickson Hall? And what happens after? That's less than a year, right?
You're not including the weekends on that?
Oh, so it's business days?
Work days.
Working days. Oh, so that would amount to the whole, the whole project. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Barb?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Stephen?
Pat, thanks for clarifying. Those were my questions. And not to be sycophantic, but thank you very much, both, all, for being here. I mean, it means a lot. I mean, I'm sure we're probably not the largest project, but this is pretty special to us.
It's a special project.
Yeah, it means a lot, yeah, to the community and everything. So sincerely, thank you for being here and for your team. And I think, you know, depending on how things go, we're, we're pretty excited. So that's all.
Thank you. Jen?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Stephen was saying and just thank you all for being here tonight and away from your families to come and just share this information. And I, I just really appreciate how much information you've given us ahead of time, too, just to kind of get comfortable with the numbers and understand your rigorous process. And I feel like the scrubbing has been done really, really well. And, you know, I just have been through a big construction project personally, so I know how important it is to like get some of these things locked down. Yeah, that was, that's really it. I, I feel really comfortable with where we're at. I just wanted to ask whether the, did the Measure S Oversight Committee already see all this information? Just so we are all in lockstep.
So they're, they're oversight, they're not advisory? So they see invoices and warrants as they're paid out? Okay.
Good.
I just have a, I echo what everybody else said. Thank you to you and your team. Thank you for coming out here tonight, for spending so much time with us, taking us through all the numbers and the bid process and how it works, and how you built up from the, truly from the bottoms up of every single trade, you know, the chart and the agenda to get to this number. My first question is, just for the public's sake, to confirm, you know, Pat listed a bunch of things that were required to provide to the coastal commission that they're going to be looking for. The EIR calls for certain mitigation factors as well, that this price includes all of those items.
I think those, those prices include in it, so I'm a little bit guessing here, but it's an educated guess that those prices included a guesstimate for the anticipated items. If you have new items, and I didn't hear anything that was substantial, that would come out of that contingency we're talking about.
Right.
I can, yeah, I can piggyback on that. I think Dave's right. And the only thing I can think of is the MOU expense that would be outside of their scope. My understanding that these numbers are based on the onsite project, not, not any of the street.
It includes, now let's get this mixed up, it includes Twenty-Fifth Street.
Oh, that's correct.
The cutout, yeah.
There's turnout through there.
That's correct.
So it includes that offsite, but primarily inside. So as an example, I mean, I'm just hearing it today, there's a tree list. If all of a sudden those trees are different than the trees on the plans and there are more expensive tree, we would, we would work with our landscaper and that would be a contingency type of item.
Right.
Yep.
But I didn't, I didn't hear any, any significant, the abatement process is all in there.
Yeah.
That's been looked at significantly.
You're absolutely correct. There's, there is an offsite work allowance or contingency. So I don't want to mix up terms, but if you're looking at the MOU number, which is the sixty thousand dollar number, that is not included in this.
Yeah, for the fair and pure number.
Right.
Yeah, that would be separate.
Right.
And the amount of work that's shown on the drawings for the offsite is included in the job or in the number. But I will tell you, working with streets and cities in their offsite, there's, there tends to be, oh, by the way, we need you to do this and there's a city. And so, do you want to connect or not? Right, so, so those are our allowances that are specific to that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And then Barbara alluded to it, but didn't ask it. If you could just talk about what kind of the next steps are? What does the next piece look like? What does this, the schedule look like? What are, what are we?
Sure, the schedule is, assuming you approve the notice to proceed today. Tomorrow, our team's already been drafting contracts. Tomorrow, we start issuing some contracts, we'll work on that. I believe we are shooting for a twenty-sixth of this month as a start of demolition and abatement. It requires us to put a ten-day notice into Air Quality Management District. So we do that no later than the sixteenth. So by the way, we're going to start the process on the twenty-sixth and we're off and running.
And thanks to that three-week look-ahead schedule, you're exactly right. And those will all be posted by morning tomorrow. So the abatement, and I've also drafted a construction update letter that will be also posted on the website tomorrow pending your approval. And it outlines exactly what Dave just shared with you. And then we will attach those schedules, not only to the website, but I will send them out as attachments to the community liaisons with their letters and send them out to the city for their website as well.
Just one of our standard operating procedures is we will be providing you at a minimum monthly updates to staff. Here's what we've done, here's what we're going to do. It's part of this three-week, the three-week look-ahead schedule is more detailed. This would be more pretty picture, here, the steel's going up, the playground's going in, all those type of things. And so that information we've given to staff, that they can share as appropriate.
All right, and then if we're looking at a fifteen-month project duration, that puts us on schedule of what we've talked about for wintertime twenty twenty, right? And we're still on track for that, correct?
So by the end of twenty twenty, you're already there.
Terrific, that's very exciting. Jen, you had one more question, you said?
Yeah, I just had, are we able to put a link to our site, to the City of Hermosa's site? Just so in case they're not community member, like just right there in the neighborhood or someone has a question that doesn't, they might go to the city site first.
Let me work with Leanne on that. Yeah, I'll find out.
And then my last question was, I just, I really appreciate you guys putting an estimated soft costs together because I feel like those are some of the costs that are often not visible to people. It's not steel, it's not drywall. So I appreciate you doing that and just knowing that. Could you just, Pat, talk us through a little the, the next step after this? Then we get North School started and then, then what are, what's our next step?
Right, so we're, we're layering. And so the next step will be what we, what I just walked you through only with view. So we're in the schematic, we'll look at what Measure S, you know, what the Measure S Facilities Master Plan range was. And then we will go through the same process. We'll look at Bernards, we'll look at Sierra West, we'll look at the, where we were with schematics, where we are with design drawings, DD drawings. And I feel like that's not right. Is it design drawings, DD?
DD and then construction.
And then construction costs. So we will just start this all over again. Once we get this one up and rolling, we're going to be able to work on multiple pathways at the same time. And so it's fifteen months, what I have learned over three years is fifteen months goes by really fast. So we're going to be very, very busy and that's the process. And so when we're ready to bring a number to you, then you will know that for view, it has been completely scrubbed. It is something that is responsible. And we'll bring it to you when, when we've gone through the process.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve B-181920, approval of final guaranteed maximum price for the new construction at North School Project 007.
Thank you for doing that. It was terrific in your accent. Thank you, Stephen, is there a second?
Can I just hear what the motion was again?
I'd like to make a motion to approve B-181920, approval of the final guaranteed maximum price for the new construction at North School Project 007.
Would you be willing to add to that, to Erickson Hall Construction Company in the amount of?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
To Erickson Hall Construction Company in the amount of twenty-four million, four hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Ready to roll. Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to next board action, business, B-191920 on Resolution Number Three, nineteen twenty, approving a debt issuance and management policy in accordance with Senate Bill Ten Twenty-nine. Ms. Montalvo?
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve Resolution Number Three, nineteen slash twenty, Resolution of the Board of Education of the Hermosa Beach City District, School District, approving a debt issuance and management policy in accordance with Senate Bill Ten Twenty-nine. Prior to January first, two thousand seventeen, California law required public agencies to provide certain information to California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, no later than thirty days prior to the sale of debt. Senate Bill Ten Twenty-nine, or SB Ten Twenty-nine, signed into law by Governor Brown on September twelfth, two thousand sixteen, amended the existing law to place additional reporting obligations to issuers on debt. In part, SB Ten Twenty-nine requires that at least at thirty days before the sale of any debt issuance, the issuer certify that it has adopted local debt policies concerning the use of debt and that the, the proposed debt issuance is consistent with the local debt policies. SB Ten Twenty-nine lists certain topics to be covered in the proceeds, local debt policies, which includes, among other things, identifying the purpose for which the debt proceeds may be used, identifying the types of debt, describe the relationship of the debt to the integration with the issuer's capital facilities improvement plan, establish policies and goals, implement internal control procedures, and provide accountability and transparency. Hermosa Beach City School District, otherwise known as the District, has not yet issued a debt, issued debt since SB Ten Twenty-nine became effective. So our debt was prior to that. So now that this has come into effect, we're moving forward with putting this together. Therefore, the District must adopt a debt issuance management policy in compliance with SB Ten Twenty-nine. Bond Council has assisted the District in preparing a debt issuance and management policy that is in compliance with SB Ten Twenty-nine. The proposed policy has now been reviewed and approved by the District's municipal advisor. And Lawrence is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? Jen? Stephen? Barb?
No.
Me either. Lawrence, thank you for staying.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve B-191920, Resolution Zero Three, nineteen slash twenty, approving of a debt issuance and management policy in accordance with Senate Bill Ten Twenty-nine.
Thank you, Stephen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, Lawrence.
All right, motion carries on that one. Moving on to next board action, B-201920, on approving change order number one for the Hermosa Valley School and Hermosa View School, additional lighting upgrade projects, number double oh six. Ms. Montalvo?
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve change order num, number one for additional lighting upgrades at Hermosa Valley and Hermosa View School. The background of this is we did all the, the background work early on. And after the start of the projects, the District realized that the exterior lighting and interior lighting and the breezeways were not included in the original design and scope. So we asked that Vector give us a proposal for that, which was ten percent of their original cost, which was twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. The cost will be charged to Prop Thirty-nine for that portion of the project.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a few questions.
Yeah, please.
All right, I'm new. Just getting caught up again. I know that there's five of these coming up. Is there any way that we can look at them as a whole or discuss them as a whole? It looks like, they all look like they're kind of related and one cancels out the other. And can we talk about it in one big?
One of them does, is a credit.
And then it looks like some, some of the funding's coming from Prop Thirty-nine, some's coming from Measure S.
Yeah. I think it's best if we go through them individually. And then if you have questions collectively at the end, we can ask all those because they are, they are separate. Yeah.
Yeah, we have to prove each change order.
Right, you have to prove them separately and, but I.
And then discuss after we approve them?
No, you can discuss each one as you go along. Because each one falls under a different regulation about the, for whatever the purpose is. So this underscores exactly why a lease lease back is so fantastic. Because, you know, the, the, the Cliff Notes on this is that we got a credit for some light bulbs, but, you know, in, in the real world, you would just take it off your bill and then you'd have your balance. But in terms of bookkeeping, in terms of regulation, in terms of the Oversight Committee, in terms of the issuing of the warrants, this, each. this, each, each one of these has to be done individually. It's a little painful and I appreciate your suggestion more than you know, but we have to go through it individually.
Okay. Okay, so let me go back to the first.
So let me, so, so for this one, you're, you're, you have a ten percent, a ten percent allowance under the Prop thirty-nine that allows for you to make an adjustment off of the price of, um, of a, a bid. So when we realized that these areas were not included into the original design and scope, that twelve thousand dollars, it was equivalent to, I mean, tw- uh, ten percent was equivalent to that twelve thousand dollars. And so this is working within the scope of Prop thirty-nine. That's why this one has to be, um, addressed separately.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, what I'm reading here, or what you just wrote, okay, so Prop thirty-nine funds, that is the, um, Clean Energy Jobs Act, right? And so we have, we have two hundred and forty-eight thousand plus dollars that we have to spend on this, okay.
That's our eligibility.
And then, okay, okay, so.
Right.
This one is getting covered by that, okay.
Yep.
I'm okay with that then.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Stephen? Jen?
Mine's just a, a, a practical question of like, uh, when we, as we move into this next, all these projects, just, you know, making sure we double, triple check and count the lights or count the things, you know, just how do we, um, how do we just make sure that we're all doing that?
What is it, measure twice, count one, uh, cut once? Yeah, so, so, like I said, if there's an error or there's an omission with regards to something like this, then Erickson Hall will cover it, so then the guaranteed price.
Yeah, that's the beauty of that.
Yeah.
But even if it's our error, like I assume that we counted wrong when we, and then put it out to bid and so that's why, right, so even if it's our error in something with the North School, they're going to cover it?
They're, it's within the guaranteed price.
Okay.
Unless, unless it's an, unless it's an unforeseen circumstance.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is there a motion?
I move to approve the change order number one for Hermosa Valley School Project and Hermosa View School Additional Lighting Upgrades Project, number zero zero six.
Thank you, Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barb, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to next board action, business dash B dash twenty-one dash nineteen twenty on approving change order number two, uh, for the Hermosa View School Multipurpose Room Additional Lighting Upgrades Project number double oh six. Ms. Montalvo.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve change order number two for additional lighting upgrades in the multipurpose room at Hermosa View School. Um, after the start of the project, the District identified recessed lighting not included in their original di, design and scope. That was included in the modernization plan. Therefore, um, we, uh, upon completion of the work referenced in change order number two, lighting upgrades will have been performed throughout the NPR room with cost savings annually of four hundred and eighty-three dollars. The physical impact of change order number two is two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars for lighting retrofits at Hermosa View School for the NPR. Costs charged, um, for this project will be charged to Measure S Fund with a balance of nineteen million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents. This project is being charged to Measure S, um, because the funds for Prop thirty-nine had to be encumbered prior to, um, June thirtieth. So the, this work could can be, could be completed, done, be completed in the modernization phase when they got to View School, but we have the contractor onsite now. So we're taking advantage of the lowest effective price by utilizing them that while they're on campus already, rather than calling them back later to come in and perform this work. That makes sense? Okay. So. So. So the cha, so in order to get the work, it's most cost-effective to have the work completed now while the contractor is onsite. So they're, they're here at the, um, doing all the lighting work this summer. We could postpone, we could have postponed this section of work because it's not funded by Prop thirty-nine. We're, we're using Measure S funds to pay for this. But we would have to call, go out to bid, bring another vendor or perhaps the same vendor back in to do this work. And it would be a much smaller project, it would harder, would be harder to get somebody to commit to doing this small of a project. So it's mo, more cost-effective to have the work done, completed now while they're onsite.
Do you want me to clear, uh, so what happened is that we didn't realize that we left that part out, or that part was left out until after June thirtieth and June thirtieth was the deadline to use the Prop thirty-nine funds.
Right.
So that's why we have to use the Measure S funds.
That makes sense. Did we then, for the previous one, for the Prop thirty-nine funds, did we spend two hundred and forty-eight thousand, or do we still?
Or do we left?
Or do we lose that now?
Do we lose that or can we use that?
That's our, uh, that's our eligibility, so whatever we're, we're spending out of Prop thirty-nine, there will be leftover money, yes.
So that's it? So we didn't spend it by June thirtieth, so that goes back to the state or, okay.
Yeah, whatever's left goes back to the state.
Sorry, just to get, sorry, I'm just sorry to keep asking this question. Is, um, so is our balance then, we, so we don't?
Zero.
Barb, you give his, no, cut her off.
Sorry, I forgot.
Sorry, is the two, two hundred and forty-eight thousand is what we had left in Prop thirty-nine funds or we spent, I just?
Two hundred and forty-eight thousand was our eligibility. So when, um, SVA and the District applied for the Prop thirty-nine funds, what, um, we turned in as plans, this is what the State said we were eligible to receive.
And we spent a hundred and thirty-nine thousand of that.
Okay, correct. Those are on construction costs. There are additional soft costs that have been approved along the way.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm, so, we'll keep going. I may circle back.
Stephen, do you have any questions? Barb, do you have any additional questions?
No, sorry, no.
It's okay, yeah. Please let each board member, um, speak their turn going forward. Thank you. Um, is there a motion?
I move to approve change order number two for Va, Hermosa View School Multipurpose Room Additional Lighting Upgrades Project number zero zero six.
Thank you, Barb, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, moving on, next board action, business dash B dash twenty-two dash nineteen twenty on approving deductive change order number three for the Hermosa Valley School Unused Materials and Lighting Upgrades Project number double oh six. Ms. Montalvo.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve change order number three, issuing a credit for unused materials. After the start of the project, the contractor determined that Building C did not require as many bulbs as reference, was referenced in the original design and scope. Therefore, the, um, contractor, um, issued a credit due back to the, to the school district. Deductive change order number three was in the amount of six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. For the materials not used at Hermosa Valley School, a credit will be charged back to Prop thirty-nine in the amount of six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. The balance of that fund, uh, is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this one? Jen? Stephen? Barb?
No.
All right. Uh, is there a motion?
I move to approve deductive change order number three for Hermosa Valley School Unused Materials on Lighting Upgrades Project double oh six.
Thank you, Jen, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Stephen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to next board action, B dash twenty-three dash nineteen twenty on approving change order number four for the Hermosa Valley School Building A Additional Lighting Upgrades Project number double oh six. Ms. Montalvo.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve change order number four for the additional lighting upgrades in Building A at the Hermosa Valley School. After the start of the project, the District realized that additional lighting was required in Building A not included in the original design and scope. A deductive order was issued by Vector Energy Group for the return of certain light bulbs and replaced with other light bulbs to accommodate the retrofit lighting in Building A. So we're taking the change order from, um, number three and we're applying it to number four, to a portion of that. So, um, the, we did, Nancy, um, did confirm with Derek at, uh, the physical account of, for the California Department of Education that the encumbered funds in the amount of six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, that is the deductive change order that was received from Vector, can be used for projects included in the Energy Expenditure Plan, EEP, rather than returned back to the Department of Education. So it's like an exchange. We're returning those light bulbs and we're purchasing light bulbs for, um, Building A in the amount of six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents.
Thank you.
And those will be charged to Prop thirty-nine.
Are there any questions on this change order? Jen? Stephen? Barb?
No.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the change order number four for Hermosa Valley School Building A Additional Lighting Upgrades Project double oh six.
Thank you, Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stephen, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, next board action, business, uh, business B dash twenty-four dash nineteen twenty and approving change order number five, uh, for Hermosa Valley School Building A Additional Lighting Upgrades Project number double oh six. Ms. Montalvo.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve change order number five for the additional lighting upgrades in Building A at Hermosa Valley School. After the start of the project, the District realized that additional lighting was required in Building A not included in the, in the original design and scope, in addition to the six hundred and eighty-seven dollar credit that we already received. There's additional work that was not originally included. Upon the completion of the work referenced in change order number five, Building A will have lighting upgrades throughout the building. Cost savings annually in the amount of, uh, two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars per year. Uh, the physical imp, implications, change order number five in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-five cents for the additional lighting in the administrative building A at Hermosa Valley School. Costs will be charged to Measure S Funds in the amount of two hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-five cents. And Measure S Funds has a current balance of nineteen million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, nine oh two forty-two.
Thank you. Uh, any questions on this, uh, the last change order? Jen? Thank you, Stephen?
Nope.
Barb?
Um, again, uh, sorry, so I assume it was after June thirtieth, so the Measure S funds have to cover it instead of the Prop thirty-nine?
Yes.
So my figures look like here that it was, um, from the original contract amount, that all the change orders came out to fourteen percent increase, um, which is concerning because it was a pretty small project and it seems like a lot was missed. I don't know, I'm sorry, I wasn't here at the time, but that's a little, that's why I asked the question earlier too about what happens with, um, the building of North School if we missed something as a district. Um, because that, you know, fourteen percent of twenty-four million is a, a lot of extra money that we have to pay. Um, anyways, so, um, I, yeah, that just, that concerns me. Um, that, that much was missed and that the deadline passed for all of this, um, Prop thirty-nine funding. So now it's coming out of the Measure S Funds.
Who is? Yeah, is there, is there a motion on this one?
I make a motion to approve change order number five for Hermosa Valley School Building A Additional Lighting Upgrades Project double oh six.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, actually, could you mind redoing that so you can give the, the number?
As well?
Yeah.
Nope.
No, the B twenty-four nineteen?
No one had been doing that previously.
Sorry.
So if that, I was doing that, but then no one else was doing that. So if you're doing that, then that's great. I'll do it, no, 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 I just noticed, I was trying to follow.
Oh, you're all.
Didn't want to be too efficient. No, yeah. No one else had been reading it, so I'm just telling you.
It's all good.
Okay.
That could just be my, my bad.
Uh, B twenty-four, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve B twenty-four nineteen twenty, approve change order number five for Hermosa Valley School Building A Additional Lighting Upgrades Project double oh six.
Thank you, Stephen, is there a second?
I second. I second.
Thank you, Jen, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for going through all of those with all of us. All right, moving on to board action, business dash B dash twenty-five dash nineteen twenty on consultant agreement for information technology support services. Ms. Montalvo.
Thank you. Um, it is recommended that the Board of Education ratify the consultant's agreement with Charles Willis for the Information Technology Support Services from July twenty-six, two thousand nineteen through August sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, not to exceed two hundred hours or eleven thousand dollars. This summer during the transition to reconfigure and update and transfer data to the technology infrastructure, the firewall and server cluster that, um, the IT department has been working on, numerous unforeseen circumstances were encountered. These interruptions created significant delays in the timeline to cre, uh, complete the work prior to the start of school. In order to meet all of the property, proper security standards and guarantee stability of the network environment within the desired timeframe, the network administrator, um, recommended additional support to address these issues. Mr. Willis formerly worked for the District as an IT consultant and as the IT technician for over four years. He has provided outstanding service and support to the District, um, to meet the technology needs in the past. It is recommended Mr. Willis will serve as the Information Technology Support Consultant during this transition period.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this item? Jen?
I just wanted to add that there, there was money, um, put into the budget, uh, that you just adopted in June that would serve as a backup for a consultant should we become necessary. And that amount was?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand dollars. So this is coming out of the general fund, um, in, uh, allocated for a technology consultant at the amount of twenty thousand. This, this, um, recommendation and this contract is limited to eleven, not to exceed eleven thousand dollars.
Thank you. Jen, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, has he been working for us last year with the, the new guys coming on?
He, he worked as a transition between when we, um, eliminated our contract with ICC. And so he helped us to bridge the gap until Simon was hired. And it was about a four-month period that he served as the consultant. This is the same break that we hired him under last time when you approved his contract.
Okay, and he just comes on if we, if Simon has a question or has a need or we have a, with a DEFCON five?
Yeah, I mean, this is very limited that, um, in fact, the contract is up in two days. Um, and so we wanted to, um, really limit the scope this was for an unforeseen problem that was, uh, a result of some water that came from the air conditioning unit down into the, um, server room. So, uh, yes, to answer your question, it is, um, as you can see, it's like, looks like a three-week window. So, so, so if Simon has another question, uh, past August sixteenth, then it would not fall under this contract. However, Charles feels as if he's a part of our community, so just like I call Alan and ask him a question, we can call him and ask him a question if we need to. Um, and if we need to bring back another contract in the future, we will.
So we've already paid him? Or this is paid?
We have not paid him yet.
But this is what we will pay him?
Yes. Not to exceed eleven thousand dollars for two hundred hours.
Looks like you're crossing yourself.
Stephen, any questions on this one?
None.
Barb?
No.
All right, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve B twenty-five nineteen slash twenty, consultants agreement for information technology support services with Charles Willis to provide those services.
Thank you, Stephen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barb, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on. She's been waiting patiently in the back there. Next board action, superintendent S dash O eight dash nineteen twenty, uh, Beach Cities Health District Partnership for Youth Coalition Involvement Agreements. Superintendent.
Thank you. Um, Ally, come on up if you would like to. Sorry, I forgot you were back there. Um, since nineteen ninety-four, the District shared a partnership with Beach Cities Health District to provide educational programs that focus on wellness. And these programs provide services to the students, staff, parents at both Hermosa Valley and Hermosa View School.
Um, the district is seeking approval from all seven elective bodies in the Beach Cities, the three city councils, Hermosa Manhattan, Redondo, three school boards, Hermosa Manhattan, Redondo, and the Beach Cities Health District Board to submit an application for the Drug-Free Communities Grant Program. Ally Stewart, who is our Director of Youth Services and absolutely an extraordinary person who is um like a, an adjunct member of our family, uh will present the grant program to you for your consideration tonight.
Absolutely, so, hi, just, hello everybody, just a very brief update, uh so this is part of our ongoing effort to support student mental health and well-being, uh we were thrilled that you guys were the first of the agencies to host a tri-agency study session back in June. Tomorrow morning at eight AM, we'll be convening our Beach Cities Partnership for Youth Coalition. Uh, we have more than a hundred community partners that will be in attendance. Superintendent Escalante will be joining her fellow superintendents to talk about updates for the school year. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Campbell will be giving an update on the tri-agency meeting. Uh, I believe Steven, you'll be in attendance as well and you're welcome uh to give an update from that meeting as well. Doug, we're sorry you're not able to make that meeting. Uh, I think this is an ongoing opportunity for us to really come together as a community. So, a lot of the efforts have been school-based, you guys have really been leading the way in a lot of these efforts. Uh, and now it's time to get the community as a whole involved, so we think there's an opportunity uh for the cities, for businesses, for other partners in our community as well as the wealth of providers. We have more than a hundred community providers who have supported this effort. Uh, and then we also have our student group, so tomorrow morning, uh we'll be having our youth advisory council give an update on a summer project that they've been working on uh around vaping and vaping prevention and what they can do in a peer-to-peer approach to address this epidemic that's uh really impacted not only the students here in the Beach Cities but across the entire country. So, I'd like to invite you to support this effort, this would be uh joining uh your neighboring districts who have signed on, both Manhattan and Redondo uh school boards have uh agreed to be a part of this effort as well as the city of Hermosa Beach and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, are there any questions for Ally, we'll start at this end this time, Barb?
I have no questions, just thank you for taking care of our kids.
Thank you Steven.
No questions, look forward to seeing you in the morning.
Jen?
Yeah, I'm sorry I can't be there, but I'm gonna be out of town, but I did have one thing I wanted to just throw out at you is um I've gotten a lot of feedback from the neighborhood about the pressure for summer school and the transition between eighth grade and high school and the pressure from high school to to make ki- or have kids take summer classes. And I, I figured since you're gonna be with a large um youth community tomorrow in the South Bay, I, I'm curious to hear how kids are, are um, that, that's impacting their mental health because I have a, I think research shows that kids need time to recharge. And I'm, I'm hearing from them and I'm hearing from parents that they're not getting that time to recharge. And that could be affecting some of our key indicators here, so I just, since you're gonna be with all these school leaders and, 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 and there's a lot of pressure, it seems like it's more South Bay pressure than I hear from other places around the country and other cities. So, I would just like Beach Cities to like, think about that and mention that. Since it's not, we're not the, we are not providing summer school K eight, but the high schools we feed into are. I, you know, this is something I think I'll continue to bring up, but I, I think it's a real concern in our community. So, just wanted to put that to, to, to you for tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, just thank you for your and all the Beach City Health District's uh efforts in this, this area. Alright, do we have a motion?
I move to approve uh S dash oh eight dash nineteen twenty Beach Cities Health District Partnership for Youth Coalition Involvement Agreements.
Thank you Jen, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you Steven, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for being here and coming out and sitting through the rest of the meeting. Alright, now moving on to the last board action, uh superintendent S, S dash oh nine dash nineteen twenty on approval of the governance calendar, superintendent.
Thank you, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the nineteen twenty, uh nineteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty governance calendar. This um calendar we have um reactivated after um not using it for, well, we didn't use it at all for many years and then um over the last two years, I believe we've reactivated it and it's been a nice roadmap especially because we've had board members coming on to the board, everyone at a different time, and so this kind of anchors us to what we're being mandated by the state to follow and to fulfill. Um, the lo- local events, um, I mean, we have a number of different calendars for different things, but this is really a governance calendar. So, um I a- offered to the board any um recommendations or suggestions, this is the um document that we're putting forward and we recommend your um approval.
Thank you, are there any questions, Barb?
No questions.
Steven?
None, thanks for giving it to me.
Jen?
I just wondered where lunch, approval of lunch fits into this calendar, I know there, there is a date in which we get a, a resolution but I just don't remember which time of the year it's in, is it in February?
For lunch?
For like the lunch contracts.
Oh, that's local, this is for state.
Okay.
The lunch contract?
I didn't know, you know, sometimes I, you're like wondering when these things come up and it'll?
Yeah, typically, it's like the end of the year.
Typically, the torn unified contracts come during the summer, they couldn't come May, June, July for renewal and we just renewed it.
It was just a question, I just wanted to have clarity.
Okay, uh is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve S oh nine nineteen slash twenty, approval of governance calendar.
Thank you Steven, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Barb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Alright, moving on, a board member roundtable, uh Barb, do you wanna get us started, please? Do you have anything?
I don't think I have anything.
Alright.
Thank you.
Quick enough, Steven?
Um, this might, just to put this out there, I think um tonight was pretty awesome, congratulations all um on the North School project. Um, I only put this out there because I feel like, you know, we've, we've been, maybe there's been such sensitivities and we've had rounds and we have had years at this, um and I wonder whether there's an opportunity at some stage, I don't, contracts and whatever else aside in terms of naming, but I think maybe there's an opportunity to not call it North School, um to not call it North School. Um, and maybe to rename it, and so I, I don't know if the, you know, the board would entertain a renaming of the, the school. Uh, maybe that comes closer to um when we have the actual thing built. But um I think uh I've heard of some names sort of being entertained, I think Vista fits in nicely with the HVS and the nomenclature we have with all the other schools, so uh it seems like a new dawn, a new day. I just want to put that one out there, so that, that, um, maybe we can, the board can entertain that at a later stage. Um, on the, while talking about North, uh the website and links, thanks for the updates, that's all great. Um, is that, do we, is it on our site, the MOU? Like if I'm a community member wanting to apply to that, is that through the city's website or through our website? I see the, the, the background on the MOU, but I don't see any links to figure out how I can do that if I'm a community member.
If it's not on there, we'll put it on there.
Okay, that's great, I mean, yeah, that'd be awesome.
We can do that tomorrow.
That'd be awesome. Um, I wanted to let the board know that I'm heading to a board, to, to that meeting tomorrow morning, I believe you're talking tomorrow, um which is great, so I'm excited about that, uh and to continue our engagement on that. Um, obviously thinking about getting everyone back to school, thank you to the administration, everyone, everything that's going on. The amount of stuff that's going on, um, and I know there's a lot, so thank you for that. I think that I would also like to, you know, there is maybe an evaluation, it's funny Jen's talking about this, I think with younger kids, I don't think this far ahead, but you know, those pressures in middle school and when we break, we break later, there's the implications for, for families, for students wanting to go off and do things. So, I don't know at what stage we look, just the evaluation on that piece of our school calendar versus the other two district school calendars that we feed into. Um, I'm sure there are cost implications and, and, and all the rest, but maybe at the appropriate stage we can look at that. Um, we have a tentative meeting, this um is through our um committee related to transformation and we have a tentative meeting on the books to go and meet with uh Google in a, in a week or so's time. Um, which is exciting given we, we have a lot with them. Um, and just sort of, I, I would love to just hear back and I don't know if any board members have any particular topics. Um, I just want to sort of preempt the agenda for that meeting and make sure we're, we're doing things, you know, I think the adoption of Google Classroom and those sort of things, maybe if there's um, maybe tactical or strategic pointers that we can feed into that agenda, I would love to um, you know, make sure we can make it as purposeful as possible and whoever wants to or needs to attend uh for that meeting. Um, and lastly also absenteeism, I know that was um, you know, it's not something necessarily that we can cont- you know, that we, we do control, we do monitor it. Um, but you know, a plan around that, uh communication to um incoming parents, a reminder to existing parents. Um, it does make a meaningful amount to our budget, so I think that it's something that if we can um have a communication plan around that as we roll into the new school year, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen?
Yeah, I'm excited for school to start, it's like my favorite time of the year. So, for lots, for lots of reasons. No, but um I was hoping Pat, maybe you could give us, yeah, I, this is if I was an incoming, or an incoming or an existing parent in the district, there's gonna be a few changes that are gonna, they're gonna walk into the first day of school and see new people and could you talk a little bit about some of the staffing changes or potential?
Sure, yeah, so at Valley, there's going to be a new um secretary, um attend, actually, who will be in charge of the attendance and we'll be bringing you a report next month on um a plan that we have to address those issues. And so, um we're very excited that she's coming up onboard, we are in the final process this week of um selecting an, an assistant principal. So, very excited about those candidates, um the second round will be interviews with um the site administrators and Kim and then the last interview will be with Amy and I and the candidates, so super excited about that. Um, we do have um Jen O'Vill, who is the director, not the director, she's the coordinator of the EDP program, after-school program, has um resigned and so we have already explored some inside candidates as potential um replacements for her and we've also floated it on our um job um website, which is EdJoin. And we've got um about five candidates who are interested there, so we're going through the paper screening and, you know, just talking to people and seeing where we are. We'll be all set for um opening day and um we have hired a new fourth grade teacher who is going to be taking Julie Postiver's place, who's going on a year's leave. We have a few pregnancies going on and so we've got replacements I mean, that we think are interested when those times are, come up. Um, and is that everybody? Math teacher, we hired a fantastic math teacher. Her mom is also a sixth grade math teacher and so she is super excited, they both are gonna be teaching the same grade, they're gonna be colleagues at different schools. Um, and so she is from San Diego, um and we've got a couple of candidates from San Diego that um are really, really um exciting and fun. Is that it? Yep, that's a lot, thanks for asking. And we have our new board member Barbara, who has joined us and so it's great to get through the, welcome to your first meeting, this is a real
Yep.
important one, it's nice to have your experience behind you and, and to join us, just jumping right in. I, I think that's it.
Thank you. Um, I would love to also just in the next, I, I, I feel like we received some sort of a PD calendar and um plan for those things, but I think it was getting modified and updated as the, so it'd be great to just get some sort of like, what's the overview of the, what's our mission for this year, I know there was some talk of like not as much PD as, as uh, you know, teachers were really asking to just like get involved with what they've been learning, um and then I'd love to hear a little bit about what our transformation team plan is.
Um, yes, absolutely, totally in agreement with that. Um, this Mon- this past Monday, two days ago, was the first time that the administrative group spent all together in the district uh over the summer. So, um we met yesterday, we all went to lunch, all the district office um employees and Nancy joined us as well and um we went to lunch and really had a chance to review um what we did over the summer and kind of talk about getting to know one another. We have a couple of new members and, um, and then we convened in my office with the administrative team and it was really, really nice to get back together, I feel like the band's back together and um had a chance to start looking at what are the things that we need to really nail down and so we have a list of, of those items, one of which is PD, so we've got some ideas. Um, I can tell you that Dr. Early is returning next year, who was our um professional development trainer on cultural competency and he will be digging, doing a deeper dive on that and so talking with him about some different ideas. And um I know Kim's been talking around a couple of ideas about transformation, looking at the vision and the purpose and kind of doing a restart with that. Um, and so we'll bring all of that back in September.
That's all I have Doug.
Alright, thank you. What?
So, that's all I had.
All good, um I just want to quickly wish everyone a great rest of their summer, enjoy the August sun. Um, I know not everyone is a lover of the back to school like Jen is, um but we look forward to seeing you all on September fifth. Um, but enjoy the last few weeks and uh we'll be ready to roll, we know that. So, with that, um is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you Steven, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you Barb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.